I'm sorry.
Yes.
A whole lot of places.
I think.
Yeah.
They're on the record right now. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Kansas City Council. Please turn your cell phones to vibration. We are encouraging social distancing tonight, and we encourage everyone to have a proper seat. For the party and president, the chair calls this meeting at Kansas City Council for oral call. Roll call, please, Mr. Clark.
Smucker.
Yes.
That's hot.
Here.
Shulman.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Sagley.
Here.
Smith. Fisher. Fisher.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Marion.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Eleven present, one asked, but we are smart one.
The president, I move to excuse, uh, member Smith.
Okay.
It's been moved in second to excuse member Smith for this evening's meeting. Are there any remarks? Hearing done, roll call both please.
Smucker.
Aye.
That's hot.
Aye.
Shulman.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Sagley.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Marion.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Louie Hayes, president.
Motion carries the member Smith to be excused from this evening's meeting. Tonight's occasion will be given by Ward Creek Castle member Jason Sagley on if you would all please stand and remain standing. Please remove your hats.
Dear God, we seek your help with our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of our own. We are diverse opinion here, yet we wish to mend our differences and reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share a little of your wisdom with us to help us do right by all concerned. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. Amen.
Amen. My pledge is to the life of the United States of America, of the first and of our nation, for God, for us, for the people. Thank you, member Sagley.
You're welcome, sir.
We are now under agenda correction. Changes clear.
Mister President, I move rule twenty-two A to be suspended and second reading to ordinance six through ten to this evening's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second to suspend rule twenty-two A to add second reading to ordinance six through ten to this evening's agenda. Are there any remarks? Hearing done, roll call both please.
Smucker.
Aye.
That's hot.
Aye.
Shulman.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Sagley.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Marion.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Louie Hayes, president.
Motion carries the ordinance six through ten or illegal per your agenda. We are now under public hearings and we have two for this evening. Mister Clark, would you please announce the first public hearing?
I want to declare in designated area of the city of Canton, at the tourism development district, Kijona, and the Hall of Fame Business Stores Development District for the purpose of fostering and developing tourism in that district, serving Ohio River High School Section one, seven, fifteen, point zero, one, board, and D. Brown's and Greenland's.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for against this ordinance? Please step forward. I must repeat, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for against this ordinance? Please step forward. Seeing no one step forward, the chair declares the public hearing over in regards to this matter, a matter not resting in the hands of council. The ordinance will follow later this evening, Mister Clark, the second public hearing, please.
I want to declare in designated area of the city of Canton, the tourism development district, known as downtown Canton, where we develop this purpose of fostering and developing tourism in that district, through R. High School Section one, seven, fifteen, point zero, one, board, and D. Brown's and Greenland's.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for against this ordinance? Please step forward. I must repeat, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for against this ordinance? Please step forward. Seeing no one step forward, the chair declares the public hearing over in regards to this matter. That's okay, Miss Freeman. Miss Freeman, could you please give us your name and residential address, please?
I live at Ross Freeman, eleven twenty-nine Seventh Street Northwest Canton, notice that they can't, Canton, Ohio. Uh, I guess I have a, um, there's that cover around the city, and I see all the buildings going on in the city. I don't see anybody that looks like me. So, and we can include, make sure we include some people that need this, uh, work in this and developing stuff. I think I could be satisfied with. If this is my home, I didn't say, I'm not going nowhere. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Freeman. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for against this ordinance? Please step forward. Seeing no one step, or would else step forward, the chair declares the public hearing over in regards to this matter, a matter not resting in the hands of council. The ordinance will follow later this evening. We are now under old business, and there is no old business for this evening. We are now under public speech, and we have ten speakers for tonight. And out of respect for all the speakers that we have tonight, please try to keep your comments to three minutes minimum. Out of respect for the rest of the speakers, and our first speaker tonight is... And I'm probably gonna mispronounce the name. Agatha Mustafa?
Agatha Mustafa.
Okay. Mister Mustafa, could you please step forward and give us your name and residential address, please? And we do encourage masks in here. If you, if you have one. Please. Uh, sir.
I don't know.
No, would you, no, I would ask you, Mister Mustafa, Mister Mustafa, that's not gonna, you cannot have that in here.
Flip it around.
I know, but you cannot steal it around. So, if you, please turn that around. Out of respect for everybody in the city audience.
Sorry about that.
Um, I was gonna go, I was gonna read my book.
So, can you please give us your name and residential address, please?
My name is Mayado Roba Mustafa. I live at eight thirty-one and eight thirty-three Shore Northwest Canton, Ohio.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I am Mayado Roba Mustafa, the owner and operator of Mustafa Family Craft Works, all construction and renovation company, and the prestigious Simmons Copyright Service. I also, as a former student, sworn oath to defend our community, all enemy both foreign and domestic. I am a single father of only teenage girls. I'm a grandfather. I own and work out of the large red Victorian duplex on ninth shore northwest. I moved here in early twenty seventeen from Georgia. In these years that we've been here, we have endured multiple armed home invasions twice while we were inside, even outright attack, attempted attacks on my children while they held drug addicts property because of the crime and drug activity concentrated in apartment buildings, eight twenty-eight shore and nine oh one shore northwest. I've been working with the vice chairman and other law enforcement trying to stop these people. I have been stuck since Friday afternoon because Friday night, a self-proclaimed boss of that police police community is a shore block gang, sent two car full of drugs and guns to my home where the ends of my property threatened me and my children. And a third car coming later that night. There is likely more than ten police reports and, and more likely, likely more than forty calls to be alone about these two apartment buildings. These, the drugs and prostitution and the rentals that are terrorizing the rest of the community. I would not tolerate this dealer to deal well and his hood between, uh, Deanna Johnson, whom facilitates this enterprise, robbing us of the peace and safety of our homes. Um, I nearly got into a gunfight to, um, with all of these men that had all these thugs last night, and I made the police and prosecutors swear that if any of these armed men enter my property and threaten to harm me and my children, it will prove very fatal. Um, now, one effective way of combating this would be to grant my business and my household exclusive parking along the side in front of my property, with the exception of traffic stop, medical, and/or auto home emergencies. There is no legitimate reason for anyone to park on the side of my property, blasting that loud vulgar music, smoking weed, and drinking all at all hours of the day and the night. But if the council would approve this at some point, I would be willing to finance the signs we've installed in my office. If we go on board instead of the council approved, they would be more than willing to totally stop and break up their operations in this area. I would require an input out of the other post, not a case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Clark. Our next speaker is Raymal Renshaw. And hopefully I pronounced that right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Raymal, could you please step forward and give us your name and residential address, please, and remind you that you have three minutes.
Uh, providing the what?
If I'll remind you, you have three minutes to speak.
Three minutes, sir. Uh, hello everyone, my name is Raymal Renshaw. I'm twenty years old. I was born and raised in Kansas, uh, I'm homeless. First, first off, I just wanna say, the Ohio Community Coalition is more, I mean, the Ohio Community Coalition is more than just Black Lives Matter movement. We also wanna help make our community better. Whether that be ed- better education plans, more community clubs, more businesses for black people within the city, or activity centers, city festivals, or others, than just, uh, city festivals other than First Friday to raise money for kids who have disabilities or sickness, sicknesses, et cetera. I'll talk to other people, a part of the Kansas Community Coalition, and it worked really well, so let me get into it, into the things that, that linger on my mind and some ideas I have, and what I feel is strongly here for the community. I've been homeless for about a year and a half, and I'm, and, and I had to quit my job so I can advocate for the homeless for a time, and people who are struggling and distressed, and tired people who need the rest it takes, uh, the rest. It, it makes me cry when I see tons of people are on the streets. I talk to a lot of homeless people who are on purpose and don't feel, uh, uh, safe at the two shelters we have. Uh, we pay more attention to the heart of pain, uh, uh, and want to tell Jack, tourists from all around, I feel like we got people sleeping on the ground, don't know what one of them say here, especially if that's how they see, so help me out here. Uh, um, uh, in the future, I also want to promote shelters across the world, more than prisons, uh, that doesn't take advantage of people in the shelter or treat them unfairly, not just for men, we need more, or our ladies who need the shelter as well, but first that starts here in the city of Austin, Ohio. Uh, even with our, our shelters packed, we still do more of this, though, for there's way too many homeless people in the city of Canton who need more and better programs for these people. We need a shelter that will treat every person equal, 'cause trust me, there are lots of deserving things at the shelter that should never be tolerated, let alone ever happen. I've been to the shelter, I've been to Mars a couple times, and I leave because of the same things over and over again here. In our city, there are many people who need a safe, comfortable, uh, uh, with, uh, tape, uh, comfortable shelters to turn to when they have nowhere else to go, have, uh, uh, that, uh... Yeah, um... Yeah. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Renshaw. Our next speaker is Mister Dan Fonte. Mister Fonte, could you please step forward and give us your name and residential address, please?
My name is Dan Fonte, and I reside at forty-four fifteen Donridge Circle, North Southern Canton. And I'm here to address the article in the paper Saturday about Canton considering trash trucks. In two thousand and seven, the state legislature expanded the Homestead Exception Act of up to a twenty-five thousand dollar property tax exemption to include all homeowners who were either sixty-five or older or permanently entirely disabled, regardless of income. In two thousand and four, in twenty fourteen, the state legislature imposed an exception to the Homestead Exception Act and expanded to include disabled veterans. I would like Kansas City Council and the administration to consider that any senior sixty-five or older and totally disabled, including veterans, regardless of income, be given some sort of relief from increases to the garbage rate, if they impose fossil living increases, that they should consider the increases based on the Consumer Price Index for the elderly. I would also like to know if we will be required by law, that seems like it's already in effect, to use the new containers, or can some of us only have a bag to put out, just to put out the bag instead of container, and not have to screw around with other containers? Finally, I would like to say thank you to whatever previous city council administration in the city, and I don't know what year passed, the council ordinance stated that people on a pension and social security don't have to pay city income tax on those earnings, so I would like to thank that group of council and that administration probably has done in sixty, I was still a high schooler, but I don't know. But I think it's important, and I talked to, uh, I, I can't forget the gentleman, this was about a year or two ago, but I think anybody that's on a Homestead Exception ought to have that relief when it comes to the garbage situation. Well, I understand whatever it is you're using, it is what it is. But, you know, people, seniors on a fixed income. I've just resigned sixteen years, and my, my, my foster living isn't one of them paying. And I understand that, I know that going in, but eventually we're gonna get taxed out of our homes, and then we can't be in our homes no more. And I certainly don't want that, and I don't think a lot of other people want that. So, all I'm asking is you pay your consideration, I don't think it's gonna kill the city, if you're re strengthening the start, uh, uh, booklet, instead of getting older and poor, so that's gotta tell you something. So, please let us try to stay in our homes as much as we can and be viable in the community. Uh, thank you for your time, and thank you for your patience. I'm willing to work with anybody who can do some honor for the state, and thank you.
Thank you, Mister Fonte. Our next speaker is Kirsten Marks. Hopefully I got that right.
He did.
All right. Mister Marks, could you please say your name and residential address, please?
I'm Kirsten Marks, I live at twelve eleven Warner Avenue, South West. And it says after the after, you know, Mayor Verdi told the city and the legislature that the city would be seriously, and he can't wait, can't be for campaign zero. Now, on June twenty-sixth, when the first of the citizens got elected out of the office, which is a response to this, you know, while reading through it, we have realized that KNTD is, and parents' own families did not meet up to the standards that he has claimed that they have met. Mayor Verdi said that they have met, that now we need. On June thirtieth, he discussed it, come hall, that those were not the net. Mayor Verdi sent to the, two sheets of papers from one of our members directing issues and concerns about why we did not meet those standards. There has been no response. Now, the Ohio Community Coalition has also talked to the national heads of KNTD, the run of the KNTD, KNTD. They said that KNTD does not meet five out of eight. The actual organization that runs KNTD says KNTD does not meet five out of eight. KNTD does not bend net hold. KNTD does not require DS play. KNTD does not require verbal warnings before any instance of shooting or rape, with a handgun, with a shooter, or a loaded projectile at someone. KNTD does not require adopting any other means. Says so in their own policy of using deadly force, that KNTD is allowed to use deadly force if someone is unarmed. KNTD does also not require reporting all use of force, because in their own policy it depends on the nature. And in language of the KNTD, also includes correctance to use of force. That is not a KNTD policy. We use the public, and the National KNTD uses eight report measures as the minimum standards of use of force. Why can't KNTD and the city actually adopt all eight? Mayor Verdi not endorse KNTD without actually implementing the language it uses. And it is blatantly disrespectful that the city and the mayor and their policies can misinform the public, that the city makes seven out of eight, when realistically they only meet three. And if people only learn this behavior, due to a group of congressmen who requested that policy manual, wrote it out to lawyers, wrote it out to the National Health Exchange, where we found out that the city does not comply with those measures. So, we have these bare minimum standards that you're endorsing, why can't we adopt those actual eight measures? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marks, or Mister Marks. Our next speaker tonight is Nate Moran. See, I got that right. Mister Moran, could you please step forward and give us your name and residential address, please?
Yes, my name is Daniel Moran, and I reside at eighty-nine Beechwood Street, North Canton, Ohio. City council members, citizens, for being here tonight, uh, thank you for listening to my time. I would like to speak about an important event within our community that happened, which are the events of May twenty-ninth. May twenty-ninth must forever be trined on the hearts and minds of Canton citizens for the day that goes down in history in this city. For this day, the Canton Police Department decided to brutalize zone systems and use Geneva Convention banned chemical warfare, OC canisters, to disperse peaceful protests going on for the chaos of George Floyd and Black Lives Matter. What I ask is, what is, is, is that appropriate? Is that appropriate of a response to the meeting peaceful demonstrators with active wars that are literally banned by the Geneva Convention? I want you all to consider this very, very deeply. What I ask of you, your council members, is that when is enough going to be enough of these instances of brutality for our police in our city? It states that the KNTD, uh, Canton Police Policy Manual that OC gas and pepper, uh, spray are not to be used for foul dispersal, but we have multiple instances of video evidence where that was used on May twenty-ninth. Excuse me. We, uh, as one of the people of the Canton thirteen that was arrested that evening for simply act of scotum or First Amendment right, I ask you, council members, what you can plan to do? We have been met with half truths and outright lies when our group, the Ohio Community Celebration, asked for answers, and there was a timely offer of a C. Cap table, meeting from which hurried assault charges, directed against us and myself, and now we go before grand jury with this simple cut and dry case of self-defense. How many more protesters will we fan over in the streets before we actually act and do something? How many more lives can be attempted to be destroyed by frankly, our corrupt and radical politicians that are currently sitting in that office before we let this continue? I ask you again, council members, what will you plan to do about this, thank you, and you remain to return?
Thank you, Mister Moran. Our next speaker tonight is Ashley Green.
Mister President.
Majority leader.
Please do that, would, let the record show that council member Smith is, uh, come in and see.
Member Smith.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Our next speaker is Miss Ashley Green. Miss Green, if you could please step forward and give us your name and residential address, please?
My name is Ashley Green, I'm address one six two seven Montague, North East Canton, Ohio. Council members and citizens, tonight I would like to address concerns about police resources and disciplinary record access. Police in our community, we have no need for government grants of resources related to military service here. We should not have our police defense officers that change their mentality to waste more on our community. We as citizens should also have access to know our police officers when they know us. We should be able to have publicist, carry records for our police officers. It's a place that's going to be placed to hold officers accountable, or not being able to work in other departments, assuming an alliance here of Canton, Jackson, and many other police departments. There should also be a system in place for ability to see a record before an officer retires with disciplinary issues, so that they are aware of issues within other departments. The fellow have a right to know who is policing us. It has been since June twenty-first that disciplinary records, which are public records, have been rejected, yet we are still to receive them. It is our right to know, and that includes the responsibility of the city, that we have access to these records. I give the rest of my time.
Thank you, Miss Green. Our next speaker is Dana Bradley. Mister Bradley, could you please step forward and give us your name and residential address, please? And Mister Bradley, can you tilt the mic down, 'cause I'm waiting for my interview. There you go.
Hi, I'm Miss Dana Bradley, and I just, I just wanted to talk about my, there are a lot of questions by police about areas like, you know, Southern Houston, Ohio. This is really disgusting, but not only that, my, you know, what's more, also allows the emergency center to, especially without, you know, the community, and I think this is like, that's bad because like, they don't really know their law and everything. Not only that, my, it's, we depend on carefully to target, if, if there's a policy that requires a care of guardians, others, for the human ally to be a question, we also need them to, guardians is to also do these people, notify when a human ally is being threatened, and then, uh, these are typical public, public property, direct or, or related activity hours, the period, parent, or guardian, this will be notified before the human ally is killed out.
Thank you, Miss Bradley. Our next speaker tonight is Skylar Bruce. Mister Bruce, could you please step forward and give us your name and residential address, please?
Hi, I'm Skyler Bruce, and I live at twelve forty-two Fort Leo. I'm here for nothing. I'm here for answers. I'm here because the black citizens of the city of Canton deserve better lives than what the police department has decided they can have. As a group, we're calling for justice and accountability. Calling for common sense measures like body cameras worn, uh, worn by all on duty members of the police department. We're calling for a review, a public review of why the police attacked people, black protesters, and allies on Friday, May twenty-ninth. We are calling for consequences for officers who behave improperly. We are calling for justice for the families of Jaron Miro and Daryl Ross, whose death came at the hands of Canton. We're calling for justice for the daily trauma inflicted by Canton police among black people. We want to prevent any future murders of black people by Canton police. We're out on the streets protesting almost every day, and not primarily for the extra size. We're out on the streets calling attention to be wrong, not because we don't hate the coronavirus pandemic, seriously, we do. We know that before the pandemic, black lives were cut far too short by police, and that continues to be true. Some may look at the crowded people, ready to speak, and see that as a negative, as a problem to decide. Some may look at the crowded people, ready to speak, and see that as a negative, as a problem to decide. But we do realize, council members, how hopeful the citizens of this city have to be to come here and feed us. How much we must believe the change is possible for us to demand it every day, regardless of the weather and exhaustion. We aren't here just because we are upset. We are here as a show of faith that justice can happen. So don't sigh when you hear the list of games for public speak. We are keeping you from your dinner. Inductus is responsible, and you are responsible to make justice happen. Some of you know that I have shared food with hungry people via the Canton Sunday convention for ten years. Sharing food is extremely abandoned on a damaging wound of systemic inequality and racism. If I've been with ten years since the temporary fix, believe that I would devote at least that long to fighting institutional changes to racism. If that sounds like an annoyingly long time for me to speak every time during public speak, then sleep makes a kid necessary, so I won't have to. Since I'm white, I will never understand fully what it is to be black here in Canton, Ohio. I stand with my black friends. Black lives matter all day, every day.
So our next speaker is Wel Mariah. And you have, I have to ask you before you speak, what is your actual name?
Um, first off, my call, my name, um, my name is Benjamin, that's not necessarily necessary. It was my best about, um, to land this person. And I'm here about a black man that's a power.
Could you, excuse me, can you please give us your actual name?
My name is, I'm here at Mariah, Incarnated, Karen, as well, that's my first name plus. And so, so we try to find my name. So, cause I'm here for children who are, you know.
For the record, excuse me, for the record, you are homeless, sir.
On the record, I live at the house of many business, but I'm here representing none of them. I tried to do my target, it's always has my name, I don't need to be.
You have, right now, you have two and a half minutes.
I have not been speaking yet. So I'm here to, um, we need to talk about that by literally setting a visual award. Has been elected changes as in empowering officials and lower officials as well, and adopting rights. That's why I'm trying. Cause literally, the only way to have a piece of this pillow, and this has lots of money, but lots of home people do not care. And for the last fifty years, y'all have not addressed homelessness in any way that's performed that actually is substantial. Literally, the police tariff, that's the Canton police and all police, young militaries have been bombing us, and arresting us for nothing. As well as this drug war. I'm going off topic here. I want to stick up this line, these things are foolish, and actually making thousands for all of reality, which y'all definitely have a budget to deal. If you can spend thirty thousand dollars a year to lock someone up or steal some five hundred people guns, then you spend seventy thousand dollars to buy five hundred dollar cotton homes, and doesn't make a very good decision where cotton homes can be sold, for, for every single person in the city to have a house that's very affordable. The state can afford five hundred dollars per person, if y'all spend thirty thousand dollars a year, per person, to lock somebody up for a year, for stealing a couple guns, or selling some police, or having just some amount of cash, which often also be penalized. This city has a completely penalized, all drugs really today, that could be done. So, so the four, what they are, the people, and the drug war, and stop farming wars with terror on, you know, and everything else, we can have, uh, whatever, we can have, we can have, we can have, basically, every socialist dream is very possible to within reach. And I love to repeat that, I said socialist dream, simply God can socialize. Just give him better, let him know he's better than that, that's my main opinion. And y'all can do that from local, local voters, to well, other places, some local voters, to pick a tenant, home, property land, housing bill, rent, uh, etc. Again, my name is, I'm here at Mariah, so let's try to get out of our name, not relevant.
Thank you, Mr. Mariah. And our last speaker, which is a little hard to read, is that, sign up? I believe you're the last one to sign up. Ms. Bradley, could you please step forward and give us your name and residential address, please?
Stop at twenty-nine, stop, my name, Canton, Ohio. And when I go home, I stay Canton, so my family can't stand. You talk like you there, I mean, there's somebody, I am. Okay, I want some points.
Ms. Green, could you please something like that a little bit closer, and get a little bit closer to her, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, first of all, this is to talk about, complaining about the police, pardon. I talked the first of the month, which I can't forget in my, in my street. I called the police, three times, two or three times, for a wellness check. So this woman was walking up and down, seventh street, in the middle of the street, asking for money. And, you know, seventh street is not a theory, and I was afraid she was gonna give my own. I asked her for a wellness check. And I knew she was having a mental breakdown, and I saw her pull her pants down, and that's in the middle of the street. I called them, and they never showed up. I called the police, minimal, most people, twice, they never showed up. Then, um, I said about forty-seven minutes, an hour later, the woman is walking the street, trying to get money for whatever, and they have a drive-by shooting party, she got shot. My thing is, is police guys took her serious, and, and came and gave her a wellness check, perhaps the woman would not have shot. Next thing. When I have a trap house, right, next door, I call the police, I call the, whoever, the detective, I call everybody. There's a trap, and you all know where the trap house is. That's where they got, human trafficking, drugs, anything else, threatening. And I've been trying to get the police to do whatever they're supposed to do, to stop it, but they ain't seen the stop. And they come out, and we twice a week for overdoses, somebody overdosed. You get the police to go in there and say, well, who's our check, no, they don't, they should go home. Okay, then, um, I'm here, um, with traps, I want them to just run, because I've been complaining for years about traps. We're gonna get those traps here that I've been asking for for years, they got. Um, now, we're gonna have gentrification, um, we're gonna have homeless people more than what we have now because of gentrification, so people cannot afford the, the high price of the rent, and they get, eat their gift, and then we have homeless people. Thank you, we, see, now, we can, please do something about that trap house. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Uh, there is no questions during public speaks. I would be more than happy to stick out after the meeting, and to add any questions after the meeting.
Sure, no, no, no questions.
Okay. Uh, public speech is over, so I would encourage you, if you would like to stay after the meeting, I'd be more than happy to talk. We are now under a formal resolution, and we have two for this evening. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Resolution number twenty-eight by seven?
Authorized various statements, various, more and more, first stores, total amount not exceeding forty-seven thousand dollars for upgrading and chairments with wide fiber.
Clear.
President, I move we adopt Resolution number twenty-second.
The move is second to adopt informal Resolution number twenty-eight, are there any remarks? Hearing none by voice, vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and Resolution number twenty-eight is adopted. Resolution number twenty-nine, please.
From Mayor's, twenty-nine, Gerald Piper, Ward, Trukey Mission, commence in seven thirty-two twenty, all thirty-one twenty.
Clear.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution number twenty-nine.
Second.
The move is second to adopt informal Resolution number twenty-nine, are there any remarks? Hearing none by voice, votes, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and Resolution number twenty-nine is adopted. We are now under communications, let the journals show that all communications are received as read. We are now under ordinance of formal resolutions for their first reading, Mr. Clerk, please begin with ordinance number one.
The ordinance adopted, the city of Canton, under the tax budget, consists of the year ending September thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, declaring being emergency, referred finance. Number two, ordinance authorized, mayor, director of public service, enters, needs me to free it, which Ohio Gas Company, D B A Division Energy, Ohio, with installation on the gas pipeline, like, same to be immersed, first by now, public facilities. Number three, the ones authorized, the mayor, director of public service, enters all professional services contracts, purchased Michael for engineering services, to enter into agreement, Ohio Law Development Authority, planning loan, about not exceed two million, six hundred and seven thousand, authorized card and credit, create the two fifty, two forty-one sugar treatment water treatment plant, renovation project fund, many appropriation orders, number fifty-nine, twenty twenty, declaring being emergency, referred finding, environmental public facilities. Number four, the ordinance, many appropriation orders, number fifty-nine, twenty twenty, declaring being emergency, referred finding. Number five, Resolution, voting votes, want to see Canton Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., board, directors, and declare it's an emergency.
This time, the chairman would declare a inhale, recessed for finance and personnel committees. In view of regards to ordinances four and five on your agenda this evening, you are now in recess.
Mr. President.
Governor.
It is seven forty-three, we'll call finance to order. We have ordinance number four, an ordinance, amending appropriation ordinance number fifty-nine slash twenty twenty, declaring it's going to be an emergency. Anybody, uh, to speak on this?
Adam, you made a order.
Yeah.
I didn't have the communication. Four eight, some of the appropriations, some money, which are in fund, uh, fifty-five thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars for medical costs, forty-five thousand dollars for other drug costs, this money is for all COVID nineteen related patients.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on this one? Okay, hearing none, we will sign it out. It's seven forty-four, that concludes finance.
Personnel, President, I'm a bad copy. This is a resolution of attorney, Lloyd Schmucker, to Canton Regional Energy Special Improvement District, King, or his directors, declaring the same to be an emergency. Any comments, Mr. Powell?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, one of the requirements is that for the energy special improvement district is that one member of Canton City Council be appointed, and we're requesting Mr. Williams Schmucker.
Thank you very much, Director Williams. You got a question?
Councils recombining after recess, clear.
President, I move we suspend Rule twenty-two A and add ordinances four and five back to the agenda.
Second.
The move is second to suspend Rule twenty-two A to place ordinances four and five back on this evening's agenda. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call both, please.
Schmucker, aye, Bad Guy, aye, Shulman.
Aye.
Paul, aye, Kimbro.
Aye.
gag Leo, aye, Smith.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Go ahead.
The motion carries, the ordinance is four and five, are illegal part of your agenda, leaders, move.
Mr. President, I move we suspend statute, ordinance four and five. Okay.
It's been moved is second to suspend statutory rules on ordinances four and five, are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call both, please.
Ludwig, aye, Bad Guy, aye, Shulman.
Aye.
Paul, aye, Kimbro.
Aye.
gag Leo, aye, Fisher, Smith, Fisher.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Ferguson, aye, Morris.
Aye.
Go ahead.
You've heard the three readings, clear.
President, I move we adopt ordinance number four.
Second.
The move is second that you adopt ordinance number four, are there any remarks under this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call both, please.
Ludwig, aye, Bad Guy, aye, Shulman.
Aye.
Paul, aye, Kimbro.
Aye.
gag Leo, aye, Smith.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, aye, Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, aye, Morris.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion carries, the ordinance number four has been adopted, clear.
President, I move we adopt ordinance number five.
Second.
It's been moved is second that you adopt ordinance number five, are there any remarks under this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call both, please.
Ludwig.
Upstate.
Bad Guy, aye, Shulman.
Aye.
Paul, aye, Kimbro.
Aye.
gag Leo, aye. Smith, aye. Fisher.
Aye.
Paul, aye. Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris. Well, lover, James, one session, Mr. President.
The motion carries, the ordinance number five has been adopted. We are now under ordinance in the formal resolution for their second reading, Mr. Clerk, please, ordinance number six.
The ordinance authorized, the mayor, director of public service, accept possible number two forty-three one oh three, from Hall Pay Village Hotel, to LLC for subsequent transfers, if we need to prove corporations, declaring same to be emergency.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number six.
Suspend rules.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I move we suspend rules, ordinance number six.
Second.
It's been moved is second to suspend the statutory rules on ordinance number six. Are there any remarks? Hearing none, roll call both, please.
Ludwig.
Aye.
Bad Guy, aye, Shulman.
Aye.
Paul, aye, Kimbro.
Aye.
Gaguel, aye. Smith, aye. Fisher.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Go ahead, Mr. President. Motion carries, you've heard the three readings, leader.
President, I move we adopt ordinance number six.
Second. It's been moved in second that you adopt ordinance number six, are there any remarks? Hearing done, roll call both, please. Smucker, aye. Bad guy, aye. Shulman.
Aye.
Paul Scott, aye. Kimbrough.
Aye.
Gaguel, aye. Smith, aye. Fisher.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, aye. Morris.
No.
Eleven days, one, one, one name, Mr. President. Motion carries, the ordinance number six has been adopted, ordinance number seven, please.
Ordinance authorized now to pay more obligation amount not exceed six thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars for black and custard sour and alcohol LPA, declaring San Jose being emergency. Number eight, ordinance proven accepted to replant of lots two nineteen twenty-five to nineteen twenty-six, and two nineteen twenty-seven, declaring San Jose being emergency. Number nine, ordinance authorized Canton annex territory known as the Central Fuel Corporation, twenty-five oh five Shepherd Church Avenue, southwest sanitation area, containing approximately seven point four one, four three one acres, more or less, sign in center, territory to board Bible City, zoning set territory, and I two heavy industrial business, declaring San Jose being emergency. Number ten, ordinance authorized now to pay central allied enterprise same qualification amount not exceed twenty-one dollars, buy all seventy-four cents, big two short avenue, sanitary sewer extension and manual construction, declaring San Jose being emergency.
Mr. President. We are now under ordinance, formal resolutions for their third final reading of both. Mr. Clerk, please read ordinance number eleven.
Ordinance, clarin, designated area of city get, as a tourism development district to be known, and Hall of Fame district, tourism development district, for the purpose of fostering and developing tourism, and that district, pursuant to higher rise code section seven one five point zero one four, declaring San Jose being emergency.
Leader.
President, I move we adopt ordinance number eleven.
Second. It's been moved in second to adopt ordinance number eleven, are there any remarks?
Mr. President.
That number. Fisher.
Deputy Frank.
Member Morris.
Okay, couple of questions here for Deputy Mayor Williams. Done my homework on this, and I kind of understand why we did this TDD with the Hall of Fame Village, but on this particular property, the first question, multiple questions, is.
Mr. Morris, we're having, we're having trouble hearing you.
Okay. Can you hear me better?
Uh, no, no, thank you.
Sorry, hold on. Okay, can you hear me now?
Getting better.
Hello. Give me one second.
Yeah, it's quite better right there, number Morris.
Can we hear you now?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. Questions are directed to Deputy Mayor Williams. You know, I understood why we did this whole process on the village itself, but for this particular property, first question comes to mind, who and why should we do this on this property? There's, there's no parking there, there's, there's no admission ticket, and I'm completely confused why we would do it on this property.
Uh, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Morris, Member Morris, uh, the owner of the property requested this TDD, uh, there's approximately twenty-six acres of land that's associated with this, uh, with the various parcels that make up this property. The owners of the property are positioning themselves for future development, and with the TDD, they will be able to implement or levy the additional taxes that are permitted through a TDD.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, how are they going to levy the taxes when it's a fitness center and undeveloped property? I could see how the Hall of Fame was able to levy taxes based on this parking and other development, but this is a fitness center.
Mr. President.
Deputy Mayor.
Uh, Member Morris, again, their intent is to develop the property in the future, just like Hall of Fame Village has an intent to develop their property in the future.
Okay, so with that being said, this statute, um, in the revised code applies on twelve thirty-one of twenty, so what we're saying is we're going to try to push this, we're going to push this through to get it before this expires? Is that what we're doing here?
Mr. President.
Mr. President, Mayor.
Uh, Member Morris, my understanding is that all TDDs legislatively have to be in place by twelve thirty-one twenty, and therefore, the request, the request is for this to be adopted prior to that expiration date.
Okay, so who determines what the tax rate is on what's developing? Because Ohio revised co, well, the state of Ohio says it can go anywhere from one and a half percent to eight percent. Who gets that money and who determines what the tax rate is? I'm just trying to get a little bit of a reading.
Sure, so, uh, Mr. President, Member Morris, uh, there is different taxes that are associated with this piece of legislation, and that will be determined, uh, it will come back to this particular body. Uh, this legislation is asking to implement the TDD itself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Morris. Are there any additional remarks? Hearing done, roll call both, please. Smucker, aye. Bad guy, aye. Shulman.
Aye.
Paul Scott, aye. Kimbrough.
Aye.
Gaguel, aye. Smith, aye. Fisher.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson, aye. Morris.
No.
Eleven days, one name, please. Motion carries, the ordinance number eleven is adopted, ordinance number twelve, please.
Ordinance declaring that San Jose area of City of Canton, in terms of development district, to be known as downtown Canton, in terms of development district, for the purpose of fostering and developing tourism, and that district, pursuant to higher rise code section seven one five point zero one four, declaring San Jose being emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number twelve.
Second. It's been moved in second to adopt ordinance number twelve, are there any remarks? Hearing done, roll call both, please. Smucker, aye. Bad guy, aye. Shulman.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Gaguel, aye. Smith, aye. Fisher.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
No.
Ten days, one day, one extension, Mr. President. Motion carries, the ordinance number, small, is adopted, ordinance number thirteen, please.
Ordinance authorized mayor director public service to enter into contract with the option of two one year extensions, startment, small housing authorities for vehicle maintenance and fuel services, and declaring San Jose being emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance thirteen.
Second. It's been moved in second to adopt ordinance number thirteen, are there any remarks? Hearing done, roll call both, please. Smucker, aye. Bad guy, aye. Shulman.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Kimbrough.
Aye.
Gaguel, aye. Smith, aye. Fisher.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Oh.
Go ahead, Mr. President. Member Morris, was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Member Morris, just for, for the answer. Motion carries.
Did I catch him off guard again?
Motion carries, the ordinance number thirteen is adopted, ordinance number, please.
Ordinance authorized mayor director public service to advertise seat bids award, and enter into all contracts necessary for purchase distribution, approximately twenty-five thousand, those carts with sanitation department, distributed for single family residential use, to alternatively entering, and all contracts necessary, using any procurement method authorized by law, and entering, released in purchase agreement, so it takes that first, declaring San Jose being emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number fourteen.
Second. It's been moved in second to adopt ordinance number fourteen, are there any remarks?
Mr. President, leader.
Service Director Hyman.
Yes, sir.
You and I had a conversation earlier today, would you like to reiterate that again?
Okay.
If a person in the community does not want to use the carts, like Mr. Fontaine, to set out his garbage in a bag, is that acceptable?
Yes, uh, and we, uh, I think this was reported on in the article, and it's going to be in the updated sanitation rules, if there is an individual who, uh, for, uh, for one reason or another, for example, you put out a very, very small quantity of trash, and, uh, the cart would not be, uh, logical to use, you would go and, uh, ask the sanitation department for an exemption, and, uh, you would not have to use the cart in that set of circumstances.
If Mr. Fontaine changed his mind during the year, and had an overrevenue threat, when the garbage department came through, he could put out the big garbage container at that point in time, correct?
Absolutely, and that's part of the reason why, uh, we went with the rear loading tipper models, and we are keeping the waste collectors on the back of the trucks, so we can still keep, uh, A, unlimited trash, B, we can deal with exemptions, C, we can deal with bulky items, and any other instances that come about, so the goal here is to be, uh, flexible, provide excellent service while cutting down on injuries and reducing litter.
And last but not least, what will these containers have on them?
The containers will have the City of Canton's seal on the side. There have been some questions about the picture of the sample container, uh, no City of Canton containers have been, uh, manufactured yet, seeing as we do not have authorization to move forward, so the, the can that was used in, in the, uh, recent media article, that was just a sample can.
Thank you, Mr. Hyman.
Mr. President. Mr. President, shooter, I have a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
We are not eliminating any jobs by going to this Red Roof and, and lawn garbage can, correct?
No, we are, we are not, and what, what has happened in sanitation, so everybody understands, for the past four to five years through attrition, we are down approximately four workers, through the, uh, negotiation process with twenty-nine thirty-seven, how we're getting through the transition is they have agreed to allow us to use some seasonal workers on an extended period of time. The use and need of the, the seasonal workers has more to do with the route adjustments, which are exclusive of the cans, and they actually do the, the can process themselves, so, uh, additionally, uh, kind of as we discussed last week, we have some future plans for the department for some other things we would like to do a better job of, uh, and we'll have probably about three people of which to do that with, once we make this change.
Thank you, Service Director.
Mr. President.
Member Morris.
Yes, uh, it's safe to say the leader and yourself have fielded a few calls about this as well. Director Hyman, there is a seventy-five dollar replacement fee for each container, and the article stated through basic wear and tear. One of my constituents, or multiple constituents, but one of their major concerns is, is going to replace numerous trash cans over the years by neglect of our sanitation workers. We're not setting ourselves up to get into a pissing match between sanitation and our constituents, are we? With the seventy finally replacement fee? No, no, sir, and, and honestly, the, the, that replacement fee would be used in extenuating circumstances only, the way the cans work is, there is a, there is a ten-year warranty on the carts, uh, through normal wear and tear, so the, the seventy-five dollar fee is for the person that sets their can on fire, runs it over with a dump truck, you know, those types of kind of over-the-top, uh, destructive measures that, that, you know, really, really kind of out there. The can has a ten-year warranty, we, our intent would be, if there's an issue with the can, that's why we're buying extra cans, we'll have those in, um, in reserve, we'll replace the can, send the can back to Schaefer, they'll fix it, and or replace the can for us, and, uh, and move ahead, and honestly, one of the reasons we picked Schaefer as the can provider are the references we got with, A, the warranty, and B, their responsiveness to working through these types of customer issues, so the seventy-five dollar is, is not for your typical, uh, wear and fair and tho, and, and wear and tear and those types of things. That would be, over the course of ten, you know, plus years, uh, we would start to replace them, you know, once they wear out, but they'll be long paid for by then. All right, and when it comes to the payment, legislation states we're spreading this out over a period of seven years, approximately one point two million dollars. Yes. Are those payments going to increase at all, or is there interest on this, or is it just going to be total contract divided by seven, and then in seven years, the payment's going to stay the same? The pa, the payment, it, it does include a slight interest fee, the payment is approximately a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars over seven years, that will remain the same, it will not change once we sign the contract. We did shop around, we're, we're going through the cooperative purchasing program called Sourcewell, formerly NJPA, we did actually take the quote for this, and shop around with some local, uh, folks, and we were told this is a fantastic deal to jump on the, uh, the cooperative contract to do this, but no, there, there is no, there is no, um, like rider or anything else, like escalator clause, to make it go up. All right, thank you, Steve.
Are there any additional remarks? Hearing done, roll call both, please. Smucker, aye. Bad guy, aye. Shulman.
Aye.
Paul Scott, aye. Kimbrough.
Aye.
Gaguel, aye. Smith, aye. Fisher.
Aye.
Paul Scott. Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson. Morris.
Aye.
Go ahead, Mr. President. Motion carries, the ordinance number fourteen is adopted, the ordinance number fifteen, please.
Ordinance amending chapter nine seventy-five solid waste management system in section nine forty-seven point zero nine, payment of chapter nine forty-seven sewer rates, part nine of sewage utilities and public service.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number fifteen.
Second. It's been moved in second to adopt ordinance number fifteen, are there any remarks? Hearing done, roll call both, please. Smucker, aye. Bad guy, aye. Shulman.
Aye.
Paul Scott, aye. Kimbrough.
Aye.
Gaguel, aye. Smith, aye. Fisher.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Morris.
Oh.
Go ahead, Mr. President. Motion carries, the ordinance number fifteen is adopted, the ordinance number sixteen, please.
Ordinance authorized mayor director public service to enter into contract amendment number one, and final, in amount not exceed fifty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars, for, for the water record facility, flood processing operation project, contract twenty-seven, professional engineering services contract amendment number one, and final, authorized to be offered, made all more obligation related to contract amendment, that drag, that all action taken prior to capacity, with ordinance related to San Jose being emergency. to the fast and good ordinance, remains the same, declared same emergency.
Leader.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance number sixteen.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adopt ordinance number sixteen, are there any remarks? Hearing done, roll call vote please.
Smucker?
Aye.
Bad guy? Shulman?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Kimbrough?
Aye.
Gaguel?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Paul?
Sting?
Paul?
Sting?
Sting. Mario?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Morris?
Oh.
Eleven days, one extension.
Motion carries an ordinance number sixteen is adopted. We are now under announcement of committee meetings.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Of Park, Park Dockery, for...
Yes, we'll have a meeting at six thirty on seven twenty-seven, Treasury Department, we'll have a meeting.
Member Carroll?
Uh, Finance will meet, um, July twenty-seventh, the council chambers at that time.
Thank you, Member Carroll. Member Fisher?
Uh, Mr. President, Environmental and Public Utilities will meet July twenty-seventh at six thirty PM.
Thank you, Member Fisher. We are now under miscellaneous business, is there any miscellaneous business for this evening?
Mr. President?
Member Smith?
I just wanted everyone to know that, uh, I attended the Canton City School Board meeting tonight and Alice School is going to be relating, definitely rushing.
Gradually. Is there any other miscellaneous business for this evening?
Mr. President?
Member Paul?
I would just like our constituents to realize that the administration is still going through their process about main three night. I get a lot of calls about we have no answer yet, but I have talked to them myself, they're still looking.
Thank you, Member Paul. I would encourage you, if you have a question that we'd be more than happy to answer after the meeting, but miscellaneous business is strictly for the council members. Thank you. Is there any other miscellaneous business for this evening? Hearing done, Clerk Dockery, our woke, our woke of the week, please.
Not all heroes wear kinks, but a whole dead kink bunch of them, boys, bros.
Amen. Thank you, Clerk Dockery, leader Smucker.
Mr. President, I move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote please.
Smucker?
Aye.
Bad guy?
Aye.
Shulman?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Kimbrough?
Aye.
Gaguel?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mario?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Morris?
No.
Go ahead, Mr. President.